Welcome, everyone. City Council of the City of Gunbarrel City will meet in a regular meeting in City Hall Council chambers located at 1716 West Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas, on Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Now I'll call this meeting to order. If everyone will please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this night, these citizens, these board members, and all of our city employees and first responders. Give us wisdom, patience, and clarity as we go about our city's business. We pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I will now establish a quorum and have a roll call from my left, please.
Burns here.
Evans here.
Jacobs here.
Henson here.
Edwards here.
We have a quorum. Before we get started, I'd like to thank everyone for being here. Mr. Howk, our EDC Director, is here. Charles Howk, our President of the EDC. Roy Key is here. Mr. Howe, our Streets, Head of our Streets, and the most famous street employee of all. Can you please stand, sir?
I don't know.
Come on, Paul, stand up.
As a side note.
The reason.
As a, as a side note, Mayor, Mr. Lyons participated in both the last and the time before the last LSMA lawnmower race.
Yes.
At, not the one this weekend, but the one at the previous weekend, Mr. Lyons came in first place.
Wow. He is in charge of the track, and we did win Track of the Year, so that's why I wanted to acknowledge him. But anyway, thanks for everybody for being here. We will now go to Citizens Communications. Do we have any? Janet? We do not. So we will move on to the Consent Agenda. 6A. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Consider approving the following reports, October 6th and October 20th, 2025, Special Meeting Minutes, and October 28th, 2025, Regular Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
Edwards, motion.
What's your motion?
To approve, let's see, to consider approving the following reports, October 6th and October 20th, 2025, Special Meeting Minutes, and October 2028, 28, 2025, Regular Meeting Minutes.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Evans, second.
I have a motion and a second. If no further discussion, vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Henson, yes.
Edwards, yes.
Motion passes. New Business, 7A. A presentation of quarterly department reports, including Court, Police, Dispatch, and Animal Control. Our first report this evening will come from our Courts, and that's from Judge Grace Wallace. Grace, thank you for being here.
All right, so before I begin, I would like to give a quick shout-out to my department. Municipal Courts Week is the first week of November and is prescribed by the 86th Texas Legislature in House Resolution 1658, dedicated to appreciating the contributions that Texas Municipal Courts make to the safety and well-being of our communities. It takes a great crew, such as our Court Clerk, Julie Kelly. Julie, will you please stand? She does amazing work, and I am so glad that she's part of the team. City Prosecutor Blake Armstrong, and judges, one of which is Judge Brad Stevens, to make a court work so well. This year, Municipal Courts Week fell on November 3rd through November 7th. And so, a little tidbit of municipal courts, there are about 917 municipal courts in the state of Texas, approximately 39% of the entire state's judiciary. Municipal courts handle more defendants and other participants than other, than all other courts. The municipal court has jurisdiction over fine-only offenses committed within their municipality. The cases this court deals with are city ordinance, non-traffic state law, and traffic, offenses in which can range from an animal running at large to speeding and even theft. These are a few common ones typically filed in my court, which brings me to the municipal court's quarterly activity. The Police Department filed 351 cases, Animal Control filed 11, and Code Enforcement one. There were 89 failure to appears, bringing a total of 452 new cases filed in August, September, and October of this year. My judi, my quarterly judicial report consists of 305 show cause hearings, 435 cases either seen for a warrant to be issued, or individuals who were arraigned after being arrested, a total of $109,957.67 that was collected, which a portion is sent to the state, with a total of 705 cases disposed during this time. Any questions?
Questions for staff.
All right. Thank you.
Our next report will come from Captain Peña, and this will be Police Dispatch and Animal Control. This is also the greatest captain in the history of the Lakeplex.
Thank you, Mayor. It's Katsulis now. I got married.
Why do I always do that?
I don't know. Peña's easier.
Yeah, I would have never done that, and he would have been angry.
Thank you. I'm glad I get to present this tonight. I'm sorry, but Chief had an emergency at the last moment. I changed it up, this presentation, because I thought maybe you guys might get tired of just looking at numbers all the time. Sometimes they're really small, and nobody really pays attention. So I thought maybe it would better serve the Police Department to, to include you in on a bunch of stuff that's going on, like actual going-ons. You have our numbers, you see them, we submit the same report, so you already have that, and you can look at that at your leisure. So, I'm sorry, let me figure this out. There we go. I'll start out with the events that we've had. National Night Out. I want to highlight National Night Out. We held it on Tuesday, October 7th, and events like this are important, not just because they're fun, but because they strengthen the relationships between our officers, the firefighters, and city workers, and the communities that we serve. But I want to take a moment to recognize a singular person who outworked everyone. It's our city's event coordinator, Brooke Carroll. Brooke poured an incredible amount of time, energy into this event. She coordinated vendors, organized activities, and handled logistics, and quite honestly, she made our job very easy. We showed up ready to work, and the runway that she created allowed us to connect with our community in the best way possible. So Brooke, we are grateful for you, very, very grateful for you. Your hard work reflects the heart of this city, and we appreciate everything you did to make National Night Out a success, so thank you. Next, we have started our Maybell Toy Drive endeavor. So eh, this is one of the traditions that we're most proud of, and it's already underway. Maybell's Toy Drive, it's a yearly event, and it truly captures the spirit of Gunbarrel City. We've already begun collecting both toy and monetary donations, and as always, our community is showing up in a big way. So twice a week, on Thursdays and Sundays, Thursdays from 7, 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and Sundays from 11:00 to 5:00, we post up outside of Walmart, and that's where we take our collections. You can also bring them to City Hall, you can also bring them to the PD, we're open 24/7. Not the Fire Department, because they like their naps, and we don't want to wake them up.
Wow.
Mm-hmm. But these are, so sorry. So, so these collection days are more than just drop-offs, and, and of course, the best part is what all of this leads up to, right? And that's Delivery Day. Can I give the date? May I? Oh, awesome. This year, it's going to be Saturday, December 13th, and that day, police, fire, EMS, Public Works, and even city employees using their personal vehicles form teams, and we split the city up into sections, and we caravan our way through the different neighborhoods, delivering toys directly to the children of Gunbarrel City. And if you've ever seen it, you know it's something special. Lights and sirens going on, caravans rolling through, kids running outside as we pull up, and it's one of our favorite days of the year. And as city employees, we look forward to Delivery Day because it allows for more of a connection to the families that we serve, all of us. You guys do. Some other events, this is a big one right now at the PD, anyway. Another important focus for us this quarter has been our recruitment. We all know that we're, we've got some positions opening, opened up, and it, we're hurting, we're strained a little bit, but we're still performing. Agencies all over the state are, are facing hiring challenges, but our team has been proactive and intentional and creative how we approach recruiting new officers. Members of our Police Department have been traveling to academies across Texas, and without fail, we consistently receive outstanding feedback, both from the academy directors and from the cadets themselves. They always comment on how genuine our approach is, and how much they appreciate hearing from our officers. Because of the success we've had, three of, with, three of our current employees came from South Texas, same area, Uvalde, right around there, and they're incredible officers. So because of the success that we had with them, we chose to go down there and recruit from some of those academies. We just made a visit down to Uvalde and Eagle Pass, to the Southwest Texas Law Enforcement Academies, and those visits were extremely encouraging. The level of interest and the meaningful conversations we had with those cadets gave us real optimism for future hires from that area. Most recently, though, this is great, most recently, we spent some time with the cadets at the Navarro College Police Academy in Corsicana, and what is typically like a 20-minute presentation, you get in, you get out, you say, "Hey, come work for us, this is what we got to offer you." It turned into two hours. They engaged us for two hours. There was a lot of back and forth, and lots of great questions that you don't normally get. They just want to get back to their studies, because we're boring when we go, but we, Gunbarrel, we are not boring when we go. We do, we do turn it up. It was truly one of the best recruiting conversations that we've had in a long time, and it's already paying off. One cadet from Navarro is fully committed, and has already completed the entire background process. After our visit that day, two more cadets from that same class submitted applications, and I'm, I'm ready to get going on backgrounds. So there you go. But just so you know, our recruitment message that we're throwing out there, it's resonating with people, to be a part of a department where they feel valued, supported, and connected, and we're proud to represent Gunbarrel City in a way that draws good people to our organization. Here is the vacancies I was talking about. Currently, the Police Department has two vacancies in Dispatch and four in Patrol, and we also have one Patrol Officer that, she's out on maternity leave, and so we're, we're short her position. I already talked about recruitment, so I won't keep going there. And this is our new, our newest hire, the only one that we've had this quarter. We've had a few leave, but this is, this is one that we've brought in, and this is Destiny Hood. And Destiny is local, and she grew up in Maybank, she went to Maybank High School. She is a mom of four beautiful kids, and we are lucky to have her. She's doing a great job, but she has some tough skin, and I have seen her, especially the last couple of days, get inundated, sitting at that terminal, and she's handled it really just fine. She's done a great job. I'm glad we got her. She was one of the first ones. We had two go through, we lost one right after she got finished, but she was one of, she was the first one to go through the Kaufman County Sheriff's Office Dispatch Academy, and that was a big deal for us. I mean, that's before we would just hire them and then pair them with someone at the PD and say, "Okay, good luck, everybody, I go now." And we're not doing that anymore. We've got standards, and we're adhering to them. And now we get down to the business part of this. I need my glasses, though. All right. There's some numbers on here, and I told you I didn't really want to bore you with these, so I just put some of the more important ones on here. You've got all the calls for service and whatnot, but I was comparing last quarter to this quarter, last year, last year this time to this year, and we were down. Our, our total arrests were down from 180 during the quarter to 110, and then our citations and warnings for, for traffic activity, that was down from 899 to 544. I, I really think that it's because of the staffing levels, because, I mean, we were fuller last year. But the most notable decreases were in the number of arrests for controlled substances and driving while intoxicated, and the reason for that being, you're going to get a lot of that, I mean, obviously, it's traffic stops. So your traffic stops go down, those type of arrests go down. And I want to, if I could just do this, I want to briefly touch on our response to the recent developments involving the Seven Points Police Department. As neighboring agencies, we believe strongly in supporting one another, especially when public safety and community stability are at stake. So in that spirit, our department has been assisting Seven Points by responding to calls for service within their city as needed. To date, we've handled approximately 12 calls, 12, on their behalf. Our officers stepped up quickly, professionally, and without hesitation, which is exactly what this community has come to expect from us. We're committed to ensuring that residents in the surrounding area continue to receive timely and reliable law enforcement service, no matter the challenges, and this cooperation reflects the strength of our department and the dedication of our officers. When our community needs us, whether inside the Gunbarrel City limits or next door, we show up. I've printed out those 12 calls, if anyone has any questions about what type of things we're getting into in Seven Points, so just so you know. All right. Animal Control. This looks a little different than what you're used to. I, I usually just provide you with a bunch of numbers up there, and you have those, again, in your packet already, but Carol, our ACO, she's been up to a few different things, like she just attended some great training, and, and I put it on here. Some of the things that she's been doing, as far as work goes, she responded to a significant animal cruelty case involving neglected puppies suffering from severe parasites, one that was deceased, it was due to the parvovirus. The case is being fully documented and handled in accordance with state law and departmental policies. Her training, some really good training she just went to, she got her Animal Cruelty Investigator certification taken care of. She had advanced training on dangerous dog handling, and it provides her with new tools and safer response techniques. Remember, most times, she is out there by herself. I don't think this is really a job anybody looks forward to, going out and doing alone She took a course on compassion fatigue and, and a mental health course, improving long-term wellness and performance in high-stress animal welfare work. It does take a toll on her, too. Another class that she had was one on the link between animal cruelty and domestic violence, so that we can recognize risk factors and assist in broader public safety investigations. Currently, she's addressing a feral dog issue over on Acres Loop. She is working with the county, we're using borrowed traps, because ours are broken, which we're, we're addressing. Two dogs have been targeted, and one of them recently had a litter of puppies under a residence, so as soon as we can get Mom in the trap, we're going to get under that house and fish out those babies. She, she really is trying to make a difference with the feral dog population, but it, it's a little prolific. Over the last three months, I did some math for you, she's impounded 17 dogs at our facility. 16 of those she took over to the Humane Society of Cedar Creek, and then one dog was reunited with its owner after they paid the required $55 impound fee. And these might seem like little simple numbers, but the work behind them is really significant. It takes time and compassion and a lot of coordination to handle these cases properly, and Officer Jett, she continues to do an excellent job representing both the department and the city. Dang it. I really want a chief to talk about this. This is going to get kind of boring, sorry. But this is about our accreditation program. We are currently trying to become accredited, and I know he's talked about it a few times with a few different people. We have, we have already, let's see. We've already rewritten all the departmental policies and disseminated them to the staff, so they're aware of all the changes. They have complained, because there's a lot more for them to keep track of, and they're, they're held accountable for everything now, but it's just growing pains. This has been a really big undertaking, and it positions us extremely well as we move into the next stages of accreditation. Our officers now have the most current streamlined and professional-aligned guidance to support best practices across the board, and in addition to policy updates, we've, we've also enhanced our officer safety and emergency preparedness. Every patrol unit is now equipped with a Stop the Bleed trauma kit, and we have issued several tourniquets to every officer, and these tools, they save lives, both ours and the public's, and incorporating them into daily operations reflects the standards that we hold, we are holding ourselves to. Accreditation isn't just a checklist for us, it's about raising our operational quality, our safety readiness, and our service to the community, and I'm really proud of the progress we're making. Those medical kits come in handy, that, Officer Martinez, one of the ones from South Texas, had his own before we, we got ours in, he had his own, and he pulled that out. Officer Dan Meyer and Martinez were the first on scene of that shooting out in the county, the guy that drove into Buc-Ee's, everybody saw it on the news. They were the first ones there, and his medical, the, the things in his medical bag kept the brother alive, so they got him patched up while EMS was en route. What's on the screen right now, these are questions, like why, what does a recognition program really provide? You can read it, we can talk about it. Really, it just makes us accountable, it lends to transparency and professionalism, so it's, it's, it's going to benefit everybody. The Police Department will be held accountable, the citizens will, can have more faith in what's going on, and that we know what we're doing. And, and then this second slot, this second part of this, why don't we just implement the policies instead of doing the whole program? Well, you could do that, that's what a lot of agencies do, they say, "Oh, well, we use best practices," but if you don't go through the accreditation program, there's no checks. No one is checking you and verifying. So we go through this program, we implement all these procedures, all these policies, and then a team comes in of chiefs that have been doing this for a very long time, and they specialize in this, and they audit everything we are doing. They ride with the officers, they watch to see if they're buckling seat belts, how they're processing paperwork. Everything they're doing is, is under a microscope, so we have to pass this. So this is third-party verification. It, it's only, I mean, everybody should have faith that if we get through this, you know that we're, we're above board, and I hope that I have everybody's support in that. I hope I did Chief okay with that one, because I was really boring. Does anybody have any questions for me?
No, but I would like to take this opportunity that the leadership that you, Captain Katsulis, has, has shown, and along with Chief Stevens, is, is greatly appreciated, and this accreditation is just, falls in line with that, and the great service that you guys do, and not only serving our community, but the other communities around the Lakeplex, and we continue, and, and I know I speak for all of Council, we continue to be a leader in that area, and I'm very, very proud of that, and I'm very proud of each and every one of you, and, and you're doing that also on a, a limited personnel basis, so, I mean, that's above and beyond, but I, I've said this before, too, that I'd put our, our police and fire and EMS up against anybody, and I'm, I'm very proud of that, and, and again, this is just another example of, of, of great leadership, and we appreciate your report very, very much.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council, and thank you for the community and everybody for giving me the opportunity to share these updates. On behalf of the Police Department, we appreciate your continued support and your partnership and the trust that you place in us every day. It's an honor to serve this city, and we remain committed to doing that with transparency, professionalism, and heart. Thank you.
7B. A bid award. Consider and take action to award a bid for the Harbor Point Road Reconstruction Project, Phase II. Our sponsor of this item will be our city manager, Dr. Smith.
Next slide, please, Janet. Mayor, Council, as you know, you were sent this bid packet earlier this week, so what you have in front of you is just a very quick snapshot. It is now time to do the next phase, so in the first phase, Mike is here also, if you have additional questions. The first phase was from Main Street to the fence just on the other side of Harbor Point Road, right on the other side of Lakeview Elementary. We will now go from that fence down to Commodore, that's the next phase of this. So we, Mike Howell, our Street Department Superintendent, Department Head, and put this, put this RFP together, went out and got the bids. You will see there in front of you the variety of bids we got. I feel like Texana Land and Asphalt came in very fairly, so we did some background, Mike did some background research yesterday and today. They are top-notch, they do a lot of work for a lot of different people, he feels very comfortable, and so we want to award the bid to them tonight for the 291, 259.50. We will then set up the schedule, so if you remember when we did Phase 1, we shut the road down and kind of worked around that and tried to squeeze it in. Mike and I have already talked, and this time, they will probably do one side and then do the other side, so they can keep traffic moving, but, you know, we'll set those dates up for them. You can't really do it during Christmas, because all of your asphalt batch plants close during the holidays, so it'll probably be after the first of the year, but, because they close in December, but it'll probably be after the first of the year, we did want to go ahead and get this done, and then as soon as we get this phase done, we'll go back out for the next phase and look at that, because the funding is there, and the Streets Maintenance Sales Tax to do that one as well. So this is Phase 2, and we're super excited to get it moving, so I drive down that road every day, and, and it's, it's bumpy, so I'm as excited as anybody to get that finished. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Dr. Smith.
What area is this company from?
Mike Howell, can you go to the microphone? Ms. Jacobs asked where this company is from, and you told me today, but I don't remember.
They're out of Sulfur Springs. Yeah, and they do work for the City of Sulfur Springs, they do work, all the roadwork for the City of Terrell.
Okay.
Also, City of Fayette, Texas, also, they do, and they, they're, right now, working for TechDOT, doing highways, and they want to get off the highways and get into residential streets again, so. Okay? Anything else?
That's all. Thank you.
If no further questions, do I have a motion?
Maybe that we take action to award the bid for the Harbor Point Road Construction Project Phase 2 to Texana Land and Asphalt for $291,259.50.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Jacobs, second.
Go ahead.
I have a motion and a second. If no further discussion, a vote from my right, please.
Edwards, yes. Henson, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Evans, yes.
Burns, yes.
Motion passes. Item 7C. Consider and take action to adopt Resolution Number R-2025010, Designating a Disaster Recovery Management Service Provider to complete application and project implementation for the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for the, for Public Assistance, PA, Hazard Mitigation Assistance, HMA, funding administered by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, Texas Division of Emergency Management, and/or Texas Water Development Board. I will read into the record the resolution. Resolution R-2025-010, a resolution of the Gunbarrel City, Texas Authorized Professional Service Providers- City, Texas authorized professional service providers selection for Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, Public Assistance PA Hazard Mitigation Assistance, HMA, programs funded through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, Texas Division of Emergency Management, TDEM, and/or Texas Water Development Board. Our sponsor on this, again, will be our City Manager, Dr. Smith.
So Council, you remember, we talked about this several months ago. This is actually a two-step process. Grant Works is here, Mike would do a much better job of explaining it than me, but I'll hit the highlights, and if you have questions, he can come up and answer any additional questions you have. The pre-positioning just allows us to be ready if there is a disaster in Henderson County. So this allows us to secure a grant administrator, which is this phase. It also allows us to compile a list of engineers, because when you do anything through federal government money, there is a process. We can't just go to Mondo and say, hey, Mondo Associates, we want you to do this. We have to have bid that service. So this is really setting the city up for the future if there is an emergency. The other part of that, as you all know, is our General Land Office grant that will start after the first of the year. That is an update to our comprehensive plan that Grant Works is also helping us with for our drainage and for our zoning, to bring those back in line, to do a drainage study and then to update our zoning. So basically, the first step of this is to select an administrator to help us. There's no money out of our pocket, that comes when the grant gets issued. We received two bids, one from a procurement service and one from Grant Works, and this is kind of their niche, and this is what they do. So after the scoring was completed, Grant Works was selected to help us carry this process forward. The next thing you will likely see at the very next meeting is approval of some engineers to help us. We did an RFQ, we've received those back, but we really needed some expert help to make sure that we were doing the next step properly. So we will do that at our next meeting, now that we have Grant Works on, if this is approved tonight, and then we will be ready. So if you remember, Mike, the last time he was here, said, you know, if there's a disaster somewhere in Henderson County, then that sets us up to potentially get some money in line to have, to address some of our drainage issues. We have them, we know we have them, this would help. We'll already have the drainage plan, we'll already have the engineers ready, and we already have the group together to help us administer all of that. So that's why it's called a FEMA pre-positioning administration. Happy to answer any questions, or Grant Works is here if you have any questions for them.
Discussion, questions? If none, I'll ask for a motion.
I motion to consider and take action to adopt Resolution Number R dash two zero two five dash zero one zero designating a disaster recovery management service provider to complete application and project implementation for the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, Public Assistance PA Hazard Mitigation Assistance, HMA, funding administered by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, Texas Division of Emergency Management, and/or Texas Water Development Board.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Evan, second.
I have a motion and a second. No further discussion, take a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evan, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Hinson, yes.
Edwards, yes.
Motion passes. Item seven D, consider and take action to approve Resolution Number R dash two zero two five dash zero one two authorizing the City Manager to close an existing bank certificate or deposit account expiring December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, to open a new bank certificate of deposit. I will now read into the record the resolution, which is Resolution Number R dash two zero two five dash zero one two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas, authorizing the City Manager to close existing bank certificates of deposit and open new bank certificates of deposit in accordance with the city's investment policy and applicable law providing an effective date. Our sponsor on this item will be, again, our City Manager, Dr. Smith.
So Council, we had a very similar item at the last meeting where you gave me permission to act on your behalf. We did that today, I actually signed the paperwork today. The problem is, once we find out they're expiring, we have ten days, and if you guys, your meeting's not, I think, until December the eighteenth, so we don't, we miss the timeline. So I renewed the other CD today for four months at three percent. So this is just the next one in line, we are doing shorter, the shorter term, have the highest percentage yield. But I will tell you that the City Treasurer and I met with Hilltop Securities last week, last Thursday, about trying to reinvest some of this money into more of the Tech Star program. So we will bring, we met with him, we will bring a workshop to you all in early January to really look at all of our accounts and start to make our money make money, right? So there is, there's some real opportunity out there for Gunbarrel, and Mickey and I met with Hilltop, and they'll be a great partner. Charles and I also talked about the EDC and how we can invest some of that money a little better. So we have that investment policy in place now, we really wanna take advantage of it and partner with some firms that can help us make our money make money, so.
Great. Further discussion? Questions? If none, I'll ask for a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution Number R dash two zero two five dash zero one two authorizing the City Manager to close an existing bank certificate of deposit account expiring December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, to open a new bank certificate of deposit.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Burns, second.
Have a motion and a second. No further discussion, take a vote from my right, please.
Edwards, yes.
Henson, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Evan, yes.
Burns, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Executive Session Eight A, we will now convene into executive session pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Sections five five one point zero seven four, dealing with personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of the fire chief. Let the record show, we are now convening in the executive session at seven oh six. Let the record show, we are reconvening from our executive session at 7:23. We will now take some action, and I will now turn this over to our city manager, Dr. Smith.
Mayor, council, as we discussed in executive session, our fire chief position has been vacant since March. Colby McBride has served as interim fire chief since that time, in addition to holding out his duties as captain as well. And after interviewing the candidates that presented themselves, I am recommending that council confirm the appointment of Cecil Colby McBride as Gun Barrel City's next fire chief.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we confirm the city manager's recommendation to approve Cecil Colby McBride as the fire chief for Gun Barrel City.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Evan's second.
I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. A vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evan's yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Henson, yes.
Edwards, yes.
Congratulations. That motion passes. Judge, Judge Grace Walsh will now come up and swear in our new fire chief. Hey, I'm, I'm using Cecil, I'm just telling you.
I've been struggling with that all day, reminding myself that's his full name. He inherited that name, I heard, from a great man, so we had to make sure we included it. We have one more step we want to do. I'm going to invite Assistant Chief Rainey and Colby's wife up to do his official penning ceremony.
Colby, I ask you if you'd like to say a few words?
I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Thank you for your trust and my P and all that you have.
Love it. Congratulations. I'd be remiss if I didn't tell everyone, please have a safe and wonderful Thanksgiving. Enjoy it with your friends and family, and as of now, this meeting is officially adjourned.